The hour of 1:30 having arrived, the Santa Cruz City Council will come to order, and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Newsom.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Brunner.
Present.
Calentari Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda.
Here.
Mayor Keeley.
Here. A quorum having been established, we will move on. Are there any statements of disqualification by members on today's agenda? All right, thank you. This will be the opportunity for closed-session comment from the public, either online or anyone who's with us in chambers, regarding our closed-session agenda today. Let me see if there's anyone with us in chambers today wishes to make comments. Seeing and hearing none, Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Do not. We are moving along. For the record, there are real property items that are going to be discussed. These are, in addition to other items, Items 1, 2, 3, and 4 on our agenda. These will be in closed session. Let me take a look here. Very good. Without objection or other issues, we will go into closed session at this time. We will return on or about 3:15. We will not be in session before 3:15 this afternoon. We will reconvene either at that time or an hour later, depending upon when we finish our business in closed session. At this time, we are in closed session. The hour of 3:15 having arrived, and the City Council having completed its work in closed session, the Santa Cruz City Council is back in session, and the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Newsom.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Brunner.
Present.
Calentari Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Golda.
Here.
And Mayor Keeley. Here. I'm going to take one I'm slightly out of order, the Presiding Officer's announcements. I want to do two things here. One is to extend thanks and appreciation from the city of Santa Cruz to Senator Laird and the Speaker and our entire legislative delegation, who were so helpful during our break to be able to get additional millions of dollars in to assist us in our shelter efforts with regard to folks experiencing homelessness, a year in which our multi-billion-dollar state deficits, the Senator and the Speaker and Assemblymember Pellerin and Assemblymember Addis were terrific on our behalf. I want to extend our thanks and appreciation to them. I would also like to acknowledge and express condolences to former colleague Rochelle Naroyan, who's a partner of very longstanding Jim Jensen, a longtime county employee, terrific individual, passed away unexpectedly during our break, and would like to extend our condolences to former Councilmember Naroyan on that difficult time in her life. We are under oral communication. This would be the opportunity for anyone to address the council on a matter under our jurisdiction, not on today's agenda, for a period not to exceed two minutes, so that people understand how we're going to proceed today. What we will do is we will take oral communication. In the event there are folks online, we will toggle back and forth. We'll take a person here who's with us. We'll then take a person online, back to a person with us. We will do that for a period of time of 30 minutes, if there are comments that extend that long. When we arrive at 30 minutes, what we will do is we will suspend then oral communication. We'll take up the rest of our regular business, then return to oral communication. So at this point, we are under oral communication. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Hello, my name is Laura Chatham, and this, and I just want to start by showing you this article, "The ACLU Sues City Over Anti-Homeless Laws." Now, this is the first. It's in Washington and Spokane. But what I'm really here to do today is to read the letter that I've passed out from the Mental Health Advisory Board to the County Board of Supervisors. But because it impacts everybody, and we all have to work together, I'd like to read it to you today. So it starts, "To the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, the Santa Cruz Mental Health Advisory Board strongly recommends that the Board of Supervisors take immediate action to help our homeless population by, one, directing the county behavioral health department to work with the Parks and Recreation Department throughout the county to redesign and establish a health and safety-focused street cleaning encampment protocol that is trauma-sensitive and follows state law requiring the storage and later retrieval of taken property for 90 days. Number two, decrease the cost by decreasing the number of police units at encampment cleanups. This is an issue of public health, not criminal. More than three armed officers is unnecessary, threatening, and expensive. California Civil Code 2080 S.C. imposes mandatory statutory duties on public entities and their employees and agents to maintain for a minimum of 90 days unattended property over which they have taken charge."
Thank you. Do we have any speakers online? Okay, we'll take the next speaker online.
Do continue the...
Speaker online.
Person online, good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry, are the comments for the best thing now or later?
I'm sorry, what is the topic you would like to address?
It's the e-bike coordinates. I don't know if that's now or later for the comments.
Here's the rule for oral communication. You may address us on any matter under our jurisdiction, not on today's agenda, for a period of time not to exceed two minutes. What is your desire?
I wasn't sure if it's on the agenda now, today or later. My comments, just like, how can people cross the road if the lights don't change? And that's my concern for the safety on the e-bike matter. So that's all I'm concerned, because the lights don't change when I'm on the road. But if I have to go on the sidewalk, I don't want to get a ticket. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Be careful with the microphone. Hi, everyone. Fred, Renee, Sonia, Shabra, Calentari Johnson, Martine, Sandy, Scott. Jim was a friend of mine when I was a teenager. Jim, it is sad to see that he passed away. He was a great guy, back before the Internet allowed us to mask our identities at all times. Jim was the lone rhino. That was his login to the local BBS systems that some of us wasted time with. Yeah, my sympathies to Rochelle and his family. I guess I've been thinking a lot about, you know, the kind of the stack of ambition that that 16, 18-story building that the media sort of, it's not a proposal so much, it's just kind of a media blitz where they say, well, here's an AI-generated thing we could build, in theory. And, you know, to me, it's appalling, because you've already kind of really kind of outstripped the local economy's capacity to provide tenants for some of these buildings. I think it's, the intention is good to do low-income housing. What I often feel is happening is the building is projected to have, you know, some kind of unrealistic estimate or proposal of, and it gets approved under those circumstances, or unrealistic number of low-income units. And you look at the St. George here, you know, it's 25, 30 years after they established them, they're being evicted. That's sad, that that's happening to people. But what happens with the buildings, when you get them produced, 15 seconds to sum up, I just feel from proposal to produce building, they should have the same exact number of low-income housing elements that they propose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Person online. We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Yes, hello. This is Garrett. Hey, can you hear me better?
Yeah, oh, that's much better. Thank you for doing that.
Really? I spent 20 bucks on a new mic.
There you go. Money well spent.
Anyway, yeah, well, I just want to kind of go back to the electrification last meeting, and I don't know if I really explained myself on one point in particular, and that's that, you know, historically, and this goes back to our Constitution of the no ex post facto laws, it's been a policy in the building codes, like, if you want to remodel your house or do an addition, that the part that you remodel has to be brought up to code, because it's new, new construction, whatever, but you're not forced to bring the rest of your house up to code, unless what you remodel makes what you don't remodel less safe, or less safe rule. But, you know, and that's the way it's been. And yet, what you proposed for this relaxation, it sure seems like you're forcing people to go back and remodel the legal part of their house if they do an addition in something that is really contrary to what has ever been before, and it's a little tyrannical. I mean, what's so different between that and just saying, hey, bring your house up to code if you want anything from us, you know? So I think you've been led astray by your climate action manager, for instance, on the gas stove thing. You went, you know, there's good law, bad law, unconstitutional law, and you're borderlining unconstitutional there, to me, kind of tyrannical. And there are exceptions to it. The 2016 plumbing code kind of violates in this way, kind of makes you have to remodel all your bathrooms if you do want, but I find it just hasn't been taken to court sufficiently yet by someone who cares, has the money to do it. So I want you to consider that in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello, I just wanted to continue reading the letter from the Mental Health Advisory Board that we began reading earlier. Police departments are not storing the items taken during encampment cleanups. Police-assisted street cleaning, commonly referred to as sweeps, takes place across the county. Survival equipment and valuable personal items are thrown into parks and recreation dump truck vehicles never to be seen again. This is unlawful and unacceptable. The daily police and sheriff altercations and destruction of people's property is a self-sustaining cycle that perpetuates the harmful circumstances and trauma disorders of the homeless people. Witnesses report that the police do not listen to the homeless people's pleas for visible specific survival items. Police can be heard threatening arrests throughout the process, making people feel criminalized and terrified. Witnesses report recently watching the police throw away a 40-pound bag of dog food as the dog owner begged to be able to take it with her. Seizure and destruction of medicine is common and can be life-threatening. One way to comply with the law is to not take property in the first place. This would also be cheaper. The public health goals of the camp cleanup programs are not being met. We think it can be done better, cheaper, and get closer to solving the problem. Studies of sweeps found that of the 174 camps removed by the LAPD last year, everyone has returned. The solution that is being employed is not solving the problem. The city has put fences around public parts that keep everybody out. The violent language and shock of the sweeps affect the most vulnerable in an already vulnerable population, increasing symptoms of PTSD and panic disorders. It is well documented that veterans in this population are especially likely to suffer from these conditions. The daily sweeps of Coral Street, starting June 3, were predated by a city eviction notice of only five days, where physical disabilities, even two weeks is often not enough, and five days is horrific. Forcing disabled homeless people to move off of Coral Street is shortsighted and harmful. Many people with illnesses or chronic conditions will likely miss appointments and postpone care.
Thank you. Person online, good afternoon.
No one else, they're Henrys.
Very good. Next person in line, good afternoon, welcome.
I'd like to continue the reading of the letter for the Mental Health Advisory Board. People with illnesses or chronic conditions will likely miss appointments and postpone care due to much further displaced or distance to travel to access homeless persons' health project, HPHP, or the showers of housing matters. This ultimately can increase the severity of their conditions and keeps them unhoused and dependent on county-funded, non-profit services longer. Supporters of the police removal of the camps cite spreading diseases as a common concern, HIV, lung disease, skin infections, as well as mental health issues afflict this demographic in higher numbers than the general population. This will force, this is why forced migration is so dangerous. Forcing people to move further away from the resources offered by HPHP can increase spread of contagious diseases and seems to be in complete opposition to the stated health concerns of the county. We need to prioritize public health. Tents, bedding, tarps, food, clothes, shoes, water bottles, backpacks, chargers, phones, cleaning supplies, bikes, mobility aids, medicines, propane tanks, portable batteries, coolers, laptops, art materials, family memorabilia, pet food, even IDs, birth certificates, and identification papers are destroyed, making it even more impossible to seek services in the county. Some of these items are hard to acquire, and some are the most basic tools needed to get out of survival camps and off the assisted programs. The cycles of property seizure and destruction makes it extremely difficult for homeless people to maintain stability, required to keep in touch with employment, family, doctors, development routines, sleep, eat, and ultimately survive and living without shelter, and everything is destroyed over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person in line. Good afternoon, welcome.
I will be finishing the letter from the Mental Health Advisory Board. Recent statistics from behavioral health indicate that, on average, 43% of the people they serve are unhoused, but this is likely an understatement due to the exclusion of contract services. In this county alone, we have witnessed the loss of homes to fires and floods, and we do not know when an earthquake may cause more loss. In addition, the economic downturn, especially in local tech industries, plus the exorbitant cost of reasonable housing in this area, should give us pause to consider that no one is immune to losing their home. About 15,000 people are becoming homeless each week in the U.S. now. We suggest that a more compassionate and sustainable plan will not only help homeless people now, but could build a better infrastructure of resources and support. This method of police action against encampments is not working. With national attention on the homeless crisis, here in Santa Cruz County, we have an opportunity to implement solutions that work. Current practices are not bringing solutions. They are exacerbating the problem. Undeniably, there is a need for safety, trash removal, and walkability all over the county. Let us all work together to navigate a new solution that prioritizes health and allocates funding to help, not punish homeless people, including senior citizens and veterans. And I will now move to a journal, the American Medical Association study, that covered forced displacement of unhoused people, and found that, quote, "Continual involuntary displacement may contribute to between 15.6 and 24.4% of additional deaths among unsheltered people experiencing homelessness who inject drugs over a 10-year period." These policies of displacement are killing people, they are worsening a health crisis. Police response, they have nowhere to go. Police response is not a solution. And in addition, the theft of, the seizure of property will drive petty theft and only worsen crime in the area.
Thank you for being here. Next person. Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello, all. My name is Dora. I'm a molecular ecologist working at the university. I'm here to comment on the harmfulness of the homeless encampment sweeps in the city. I have attended many of these sweeps where people's belongings are destroyed by bulldozers and shoveled into dumpsters. We are told often that they are for the sake of health and safety, that the encampments are unsanitary. As you may know, there was a shigella outbreak, a potentially life-threatening disease that causes dysentery symptoms spread by unclean water. At Harvey West at the time, where an encampment had formed, the city shut off the water. You don't have to be a biologist to understand that actions like that only spread disease and threaten lives. The city also seems to throw away perfectly sanitary items for the sake of health and safety. One man who lost his house due to fire told me how city workers took his still-new and plastic-wrapped survival gear given to him by FEMA and destroyed it, claiming it was unsanitary and dangerous. On top of that, throwing away people's belongings destroys their medicine, forced relocation aggravates chronic or acute conditions, and sweeping areas like Coral Street forces people to move further from vital medical aid like HPHP. If the sweeps are being done for the sake of health and safety, it certainly doesn't seem to be for the health of homeless people. We are also often told that encampments are swept for the sake of the environment. At the Pogonip open spaces, I have witnessed bulldozers plowing down wide paths into the meadows and forests to destroy encampments, doing obviously more damage than a small encampment. I have found large piles of crushed and destroyed belongings left behind, many of which seem not to get cleaned up. As an ecologist, I can say confidently that the way we are currently addressing encampments is harming, not protecting our ecology. If we can use nature for recreation, we should also be able to use it for survival, and simple measures like regularly serviced trash cans and bathrooms would be cheaper and more effective than mechanized sweeps. It is clear that these sweeps are not addressing health or our environment properly, and it is also clear to me that encampments reform immediately after sweeps, just with more traumatized inhabitants. This is a stupid and wasteful cycle. We all know there's a better way to address these encampments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Afternoon. I'm Greg Bengerson, a registered voter of Santa Cruz and currently living in the streets, but planning on heading back into apartment land very soon. It's no fun out there. I haven't been swept, but I do see major effects on people, particularly those who are vulnerable or are already experiencing psychiatric symptoms. It's getting crazy out there. Of course, that's a broader issue, but I just wish that it was taken into consideration, that I do see people really being negatively impacted. As far as property, it gets down to the nitty-gritty of what should be survival gear, et cetera, and saved, and then what legitimately is abandoned. I just wish that most of my property wasn't just disappearing to my fellow homeless people. But we need to give a better example from how the police and the city take care of property, and maybe my friends would follow suit. There's a lot of things that we do need to do on our behavior side, both how we affect the environment and just our behavior along with levy blocking bikes and stuff, but it's hard for me to make a plea to my friends, and I do, but when they do see city and police behavior at times, kind of going against what policy is or stated policy, and let's just all try to work on things and be conscious of those people that are very, very vulnerable, and how they're getting kind of squished in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keeley, members of the council. My name is Troy Mason. I have been homeless pretty much since I got here. I see a lot of people are very mean here to homeless people. I have ideas, I have an idea to erect a monument in honor of the homeless Americans who died here, and maybe even out of California. But I was just in San Francisco, and I went to that art museum, that monolith, that gorgeous structure with the angels inside of it. And I was thinking, you know, Santa Cruz could be a pillar of light and hope for the whole world. A lot of tourists come here, and this monument, it shot a beam of light, was way up on the mountain, and they had their names engraved. I have a complete schematic, but it would bring more people here from all over the world, it would show the world that we know how to treat our own, because we're Santa Cruzians, man. We love this place just as much as you all do. And not trying to destroy it, but there's a lot of people out there that don't care, that don't have American values and morals. And we, the ones of us that do, we got to deal with that. And then you're trying to make us victims and do horrible things to us, too. So I just think that we should just, if it's upside down, turn it around, man. We got to start telling people to love your neighbor and to love each other, because we could really be a shining light, and I think that's what we should do. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
I brought some extra copies of this very long paper. I welcome you guys back after your summer vacation, summer session, and I'd like to catch you up. So on June 3, I don't know if you guys left at that point, but on June 3, started the Coral Street sweeps. On July 29 was the Pogonip sweeps, and on May 28 was the sweeps on Harvey West, after the water was shut down after a shigella outbreak. That is an extreme problem, and I'm still trying to follow up with the Water Department for why. There are several issues with how we treat our homeless people, but most acutely, I have noticed that the issue is property destruction. There are several laws that say that property should be kept, both Civil Code 2080, the camping ordinance, 636, and Gavin Newsom's nearest executive order on July 25, all say that valuable property that is taken by any state or city employee should be stored for 60 to 90 days, and this is not occurring. I recently, at the Pogonip, marked a wheelchair with a note saying, "This is valuable medical equipment, please store for huff." I then called and called, and I've spoken to several officers and the property department of the police station, and they did not save any of the equipment that we marked with medical equipment, and they didn't save the wheelchair either. They didn't save the tents. All of this is things that are supposed to be saved by the camping ordinance and by Civil Code 2080. SCPD is regularly the issue. They are threatening arrests, they are using rude language. Sergeant Ross, Officer Care, Officer Kaufman are some of the three rudest people I've seen who have made fun of homeless people, and directly to their face aggressively called them liars. I recently watched them try to take away my friend's dog, who he's had for decades, and called him a liar when he said, "That was my dog, that's my dog." And they said, "You're a liar," and they tried to take him away, and only when a random person came up that wasn't homeless and pointed out that he was telling the truth, then they listened to them. That is dehumanization, and it is a crucial issue.
Thank you. Next person in line. Good afternoon.
Yes, hello. Before I identify myself, I'd like to question a point of order.
Yes.
Last time, third time that Garrett mentioned it, his two minutes got changed to three minutes. What's going on with that?
I'm sorry, say it again.
We are usually given three minutes to make public comments and comment on things, and on the 25th of June, third time that Garrett spoke, at about 58 minutes, you guys changed the two minutes to three minutes. Part of your public record. Everybody should be getting three minutes. I would like three minutes.
You can have two minutes, because that's what it says on our agenda today, and I will take a look at that for our next...
Okay, fine.
Excuse me, we don't talk over each other. I didn't talk over you, you're not going to do it over me. So now I'm going to respond to you. You have two minutes today. I will take a look at the issue, and I will respond next week, next time the council's in session as to our protocol. But please proceed with your two minutes.
Pardon me for speaking over you. Wasn't my intention, I appreciate the clarity.
Very good, thank you.
And we'll find more clarity.
There you go.
So gee, while everybody was on vacation, there sure have been a lot of things going on. I'm certainly going to talk about some information I found out firsthand diagonally across the street at Planned Parenthood. You know, nobody needs to believe a word I... Timer. My name is James Ewing Whitman. I guess I identify as the handsome devil party. So Monkeypox was first patented in 1997, so there's a lot of scams going on with the World Homicide Organization about that right now. You know, we did have a fake political assassination. That was pretty wild. What I think is even weirder is the skull-and-bones Republican, J.D. Vance, that, what's interesting about that gentleman is all the Democrats seem to like him. I wonder why. So what else is really going on? We had a $277 billion sale-off by Warren Buffett that caused a $4 trillion loss in the stock market, which is really with derivatives banking, is over a $40 trillion loss. What else is going on? Anybody can look into some video presentations or read the book, The Great Taking, by David Rogers Webb. It really describes what's going on. So I don't really follow fake-stream news that often, but sometimes I do. And I was watching Gutfeld last Wednesday night, and there were four professional male athletes, two professional male athletes, that were both talking about how detrimental taking estrogen, excuse me, pardon me, taking testosterone is for men. And then they mentioned that Planned Parenthood is giving testosterone to young women. I went in there on Friday, I was polite. I asked for some paperwork on that, they couldn't provide it. I asked for information on their website, they couldn't provide it. But they didn't deny that that's happening. So I guess that's enough for now, keeping confidentiality and stuff. This isn't mine, this is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Thank you. Good afternoon, next person in line.
I'm not a student. I'm a student. I'm a student. I'm a student.
Next person in line. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name's Catherine Travers, and I live at the St. George Hotel. My name's Catherine Travers, and I live at the St. George Hotel. I couldn't see on the agenda if there was going to be anything brought up about the rent increases. Is there...
There is not on today's agenda, so your oral communication is in order.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't really know what to say, because I didn't prepare anything, but I arrived thinking that other more knowledgeable people were going to be here, but it seems like me and my partner are the only ones here. There's, I don't know how many people live there, close to 200, I think. We have been living there 13 years, and we've had one rent increase in that time, and we're going from $1,000 a month for one studio apartment to $1,600 a month in November. So that's like a 60% increase, and I'm going to reference the state bill 1482, I believe it's called, 1482, that was in 2019, saying that rent increases couldn't be more than 10% a year. And I know that the management that I believe is...
Dan Randalls. He's here to watch.
There's a, I can't remember the name of the management. They have switched companies. They say they have sold it, but I believe it's more been of an inheritance, from father to daughter, and...
Let me just say this. We don't typically respond during oral communication. I do want to let you know, we are...
Oh, well...
Should always say, we have received a fair amount of correspondence on this. There is work being done inside the city government to understand this issue and its complexities. Don't be surprised if this appears at some point on a future agenda, so...
Okay.
But thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next person in line. Hello. How are you, sir? Good to see you again.
Turned on channel 25, you were on. I'm like, ah! Anyway, I'm here to talk about this, like, you know, what's going on with the homeless, this encampment craziness and stuff. It's like, when the Supreme Court did this crazy thing they did, I called the chief, you know, you go there and you can't get an appointment with him straight up. So I called him, and he called me back, and I talked to him, because, I mean, I'm just so concerned, it don't make sense to me. I mean, it's like, where do we put the homeless if there's nowhere to put them? I mean, is there in determined camps? Is it Holocaust time again already? Learned anything? Is there any protections, the city, y'all, our people, our folks? Any protections for what's happening out there? This is real. It's reality. Nowhere to go? What, what? The little they got? I'm hearing that they throwing it away? I talked to the chief. I asked him. He said he wasn't doing that kind of activity. So if they are doing that kind of, do the city, do they oversee them, watch them, give them instructions? Do they listen? Can they follow your guidance? If your folks need you, we need you now. I know you all know what reality is. Can somebody help somebody in this world? It's only getting worse. What up? Who's next? You? I don't know if you can hear me or feel me yet, but I'm saying, if there's some protection, can we get some now? Show them. Pump your chests up. Do like we do, because we gotta walk these streets every day. What up? Help us. Help. Help yourself. Help this world. Save somebody something. It's real. I know y'all know.
We are now at just a little bit past. I don't think there's anybody else who wants to address us on oral communication. Anybody online, Ms. Bush?
Thank you all very much. We are on statements of disqualifications. Does a council member, any council members need to make such statements? Seeing and hearing none. Additions and deletions the agenda. Ms. Bush, do we have any additions or deletions?
No, we don't.
Thank you. City attorney report on closed session, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Keely, members of the city council. There are four items on this afternoon's closed session. First item was a conference with legal counsel concerning liability claims. Those are the claims of Viet Hoang Vo and Geico Insurance Company. Those items are also listed on your afternoon consent calendar for council action. Second item was real property negotiations. Council received a report from its real property negotiator concerning city-owned property at 37 Municipal Wharf. Third item was a conference with legal counsel involving council initiation of litigation or potential initiation of litigation. Fourth item was a conference with legal counsel concerning significant exposure to litigation. There was one item discussed under that category, and there was no reportable action on any of those items.
Thank you, sir. We are on item five, council meeting agenda. Ms. Bush, is there anything you would like to draw to our attention?
No, there are no changes.
Thank you so much. We are on the consent agenda. This is, for those of you unfamiliar with it, we will be taking up items six through 29 inclusive on one vote. What we will do is I will go around the dais and see if there's anyone who wishes to pull an item, comment on an item, or ask a question. I am now going to begin with Councilmember Newsom. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just comments on items 16, 17, 21, and 24.
Please provide those now.
Thank you. I'm really happy to see each of these items on our agenda. They each deal with infrastructure improvements in my district that are vitally needed. Item 16 in particular deals with the completion of the Main Beach Bathroom Innovation Project. I want to thank Director Elliott and Planner Downing for their fine work on this much-needed project and for completing the project in time for community members and visitors to enjoy during summer months. I also want to thank Director Elliott and his team for item 17. As we know, the wharf is an iconic and cherished asset in our community that was damaged by storms earlier this year, so I'm happy to see that we are getting to work repairing the wharf so that our community can enjoy it a bit more. And finally, item 21 and item 24 will improve bicycle safety in my district through providing a protective bike lane on Bay Street, as is the case with item 21, and at the Roundabout, where Pacific Avenue and Beach Street meet, as is the case with item 24. This is much-needed work in my district and that will improve safety in our community. And I want to thank Public Works Director Nagwin, Transportation Planner Gallagley, and Transportation Manager Starkey for bringing each item forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Brown is recognized on the consent agenda.
I have a couple of comments on item 18, which is the contract for cleanup of encampments in the Pogonip. I am particularly concerned about this item in large part because of what we heard during oral communications about the experience of people who are being swept from these encampments and the loss of property. So I want to ask a question about that. I'm not going to ask for folks to respond right now, but I want you all to know, those of you who came, that I hear you, and I, too, have had experiences where I've recently encountered people who tell me that their, for example, medications have been taken with a bat when their things were taken during clearance of an encampment. You know, for a city that is, you know, doing things that we hope are going to be contributing to improved health and safety for all in our community and that has taken a significant role in responding to the needs and the challenges associated with our unhoused population, I think we have a responsibility to ensure that people are not losing their, you know, in some cases, really critical belongings. I mean, identification, medication, those are the things, you know, I mean, obviously other things as well, and the trauma that people experience. And I fear that we are going to be heading back into the days of just pushing people around, confiscating their belongings, and with no recourse for those folks, and immeasurable trauma. So I'm going to be voting no on this item. I'm not going to try to convince anyone to oppose it, because I do understand that there is a need for management of our open spaces, and I'm very concerned about people living in, you know, long-term in those open spaces. We have fire danger, but it comes as a result of pushing people around. And I've been consistent during my time on the council. Most of my time on the council has been in the context of, you know, a court ruling that was just recently overturned, and I just can't express how concerned I am about what people are going to experience, and I don't think it benefits our community as a whole to have more traumatized people just going back out onto the streets without their medication, without identification, without the ability to do the things they need to do to get out of the situation. So I'm going to be voting no on this item, and I will be following up. Laura, I know how to reach you. Other folks, hopefully you can connect through Laura, because I am very concerned. And, you know, I just, I don't think that, and we have policies about that, so if we're violating our own policies, then we really need to be taking a step back and looking at that. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. We are, Councilmember Watkins is recognized.
I don't have any comments on that.
The vice mayor is recognized.
I would like to say thank you to Public Works for item, I believe it was 21, and for item, and that's the protected bike lanes, the stop sign at Bay, or, excuse me, 24 and Seaside. That's been a dangerous intersection, especially since the Starbucks has been added to that corner. And item 27, the West Cliff Drive stabilization. I would like to comment also on the Pogonip Nature Loop Encampment Cleanup. And perhaps you haven't been out there to see the dangerous conditions, but the people that are living out there are being victimized themselves by other people out there, and so it's not safe for people to live in encampments, and so I support the encampment cleanup. And it's our responsibility to ensure that our protected nature areas are protected for everyone and the waterways are protected as it feeds into the tributaries feed into the Salerno River, which is our water source. So thank you for that cleanup effort.
Councilmember Colin Tar Johnson is recognized.
Thank you. I will also quickly comment on item 18 and then also 21, 24, 26, 27. I'll make them brief. Item 18, I just want to acknowledge that every single person that we encounter at an encampment is offered shelter, and we spend over $8 million in our community.
Excuse me.
That is false. That is a lie. But that's false.
Please remove the lady from the chambers.
That's false.
We spend over $8 million.
Excuse me.
100% a lie.
The council member is now recognized. The council member is now recognized.
Thank you. So thank you to this council for approving a homelessness response framework that invests over $8 million to support folks through shelter. No other city in this community or our county board of supervisors is investing in that way. Items 21, 24, and 26, I also just want to acknowledge and thank our Public Works team and our transportation team for improving pedestrian and bike safety. And item 27, just how incredible of a work that we've done to quickly stabilize West Cliff and make West Cliff safer residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. You had those cover all of your items that you wish, thank you very much. Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Thank you. I had a comment on 18 and item number... Item 12 and item 18.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Item 12 is the California Ocean Protection Council grant regarding grant funds to develop a resilient coast Santa Cruz shoreline adaptation blueprint, and this follows a lot of the work that our Climate Action Plan and greenhouse gas reduction efforts, and so I'm really happy to see this grant program and really support that. Thank you. Item 18 is the Pogonip Nature Loop Trail Encampment Cleanup Contract, and this is cleanup work and authorization of funds for that cleanup in that area. And in light of, you know, what we've had come before us in oral communications, I just, I think we have a need to really show and communicate and somehow, and I'm asking the city manager to, as we move forward, to really make sure our homelessness response team, we have our director of that, and I know that there are staff members from each department that coordinate on these efforts, and to really maybe document and show in photos and videos, there's a concern in the community and there are statements being made, and, you know, the information that we get doesn't show violations, and the pictures I see shows, it doesn't look like belongings. So I, you know, I hope that it's looked into and that maybe photos and video are a good way to go going forward as it's documented, and I know that is done to some degree, but I think it's really important, we do have to clean up any environmental hazards and fire risks. That is our responsibility, but we also have a responsibility to people, and I know our efforts have been really geared at people first, and so let's make sure that this difference and conflict is addressed and that we're doing our best to support going forward. Thank you.
Just an opportunity for the public to comment upon any of the items on the consent agenda, excluding number 18, if you testified essentially on that earlier regarding homeless issues. Anyone on this, on the consent agenda, exclusive of item 18, if you've already testified? Good afternoon.
Yes, I'd like to bring attention to a point of order again. I was correct. Whereas on June 25th, Garrett did speak at about a few seconds after 58 minutes, where you changed his two minutes to three minutes, because he was saying the subject he wanted to talk about, which I want to talk about, too, had to do with the leaf blower issue. So I'm hoping that everybody, if they want to, has three minutes each to talk about the consent agenda items, because I'd like to talk about number seven, which is the minutes, and number 18, the Pogonip. Please.
Please proceed for two minutes.
One can only try, can't they?
That's right, and you do a very good job of, Mr. Ewing. Thank you.
I appreciate that. So, okay, first of all, I really want to thank the clerks. They are the historians. I didn't have a complete time to look at all the minutes and the notes that you took, but I liked some of the things you said. Thank you very much. What brought me in here more than five years ago is why are we allowing military frequency weapons into civilian locations? On that note, we are all homeless. I've been recorded several times, sometimes for over an hour, talking about these issues. But somebody did a short film for Keith McHenry when I said the homeless people that seem to be getting by as well as they can, some of them are full-time college students, they have full-time jobs, and they have two or three children, and they're still making by with less. We are all, how much time do I have? We are all homeless because of these frequency weapons, because your home is supposed to be... Because your home is supposed to be safe. It's supposed to be private. And with these frequency weapons, it is not. Guess that's enough for now. Thank you, Mr. Keely.
Thank you, Mr. Yuen. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Seen and hearing none. Matters back before the body. You know, let me, hold on just a second. We don't, no, excuse me. We don't accept people standing up and shouting. If you want to raise a point of order, you come to the dais, you raise a point of order. I've already explained this. We are on the consent agenda, accepting comment, except on item 18 if you essentially testified on it during oral communication. Do you wish to testify on an item other than 18?
Yeah, not 18. Not 18. No, okay. I was, I was, I was, I was led, believe, I were going from six to 29, just from...
What is the item you wish to testify on?
The Wharf Repairers.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
Ms. Bush, this is two minutes, not three minutes.
Okay. I'll take, I'll take a buck and a half. How about that? I, I just want to talk about, when I worked out at the Dolphin at the end of the wharf, it was long after Phil's, you know, was gone and, you know, you could buy beverages out there, you know, not, not real, you know, not real Disneyland-type prices, you know, just a soda pop, right? And feel like you're a little closer to Hawaii out there on the end of the wharf. And yeah, I mean, the damage done, you know, certainly it's pretty significant. I, I feel like, I feel like the end of the wharf is a very special place and the damage, I guess you're, let's see, I guess, sorry to not be prepared here. Well, anyways, the wharf repair, yeah, the wharf repair, I think it should be sensitive to the fact that, yeah, having, having a restaurant at the end of the wharf is, is, you know, is essentially a benefit to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Seen and hearing none. Matters back before the body. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second by Councilmember Calentari Johnson? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye, with the exception of item 18.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved.
Sorry, you skipped over.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda? Mayor Keely?
Thank you very much. We are on item 30. This is, this is a municipal code amendment to historic variations responding to modification requested by the California Coastal Commission. We have members of the planning department representing that department who will provide opening statements. Nice, good afternoon, welcome. Hope you had a wonderful summer.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good afternoon, councilmembers. We actually don't have a staff presentation today. This is a very brief technical item. We are available to answer any questions.
Other questions by councilmembers? This will be the, Councilmember Brown? No? Council, Councilmember questions? Seen and hearing none, this will be the opportunity for anyone who's with us today to comment on item 20. 30, brother, excuse me, item 30. Anyone online? Seen and hearing none. Matters back before the body.
Remove the staff recommendation.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Further debate or discussion, seen and hearing none. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passed as ordered. We are on item 31, an ordinance to streamline permitting and establish standards for private property outdoor seating associated with eating and/or drinking establishments. We have staff presentations. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting. Ms. Anger, will you be opening on this?
I will.
Ms. Unit.
Thank you. I will be starting the presentation.
Thank you.
And Ms. Unit will be finishing. Thank you very much, Mayor and City Councilmembers. So can I have the first slide, please? Thank you very much. Okay, so this is the item on private property outdoor seating for eating and drinking establishments. That's restaurants, bars, brew pubs, et cetera. This is with the Subcommittee on Outdoor Seating with councilmembers Brunner, Newsom, and Calentari Johnson, as well as staff from the Economic Development and Housing Department and the Planning and Community Development Department. So, clicker. So, as in background, restaurants and bars had temporary outdoor seating areas set up during COVID when the indoor spaces were closed. They were set up through a temporary emergency permit program. These permits have been extended a number of times while the Subcommittee and staff were exploring some more permanent ways to facilitate allowing these spaces to become permanent. So they're currently, these permits are currently extended through May of 2025. There are 22 businesses that hold active temporary permits. Many of these businesses have expressed interest in becoming permanent. So the Subcommittee and staff have done a lot of work in the last year. We've had seven, might actually be eight now, Subcommittee meetings from June of 2023 through July 2024. We've had three community outreach meetings in September of 2023. We had an outreach meeting specifically with the businesses and then another one with the general public. We also conducted a survey. And then we've had four public hearings, which were two Planning Commission hearings in April and June. And now in August, we will be having two City Council hearings. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the existing process. So there is a way for these businesses to establish outdoor patios right now. They would require approval of an administrative use permit and a design permit. If the establishment has a non-conforming alcohol service use, which means that their alcohol use predates the requirements of our alcohol use ordinance, and they expand their alcohol use, then that would require approval of a special use permit. A, an administrative use and design permit costs over $7,000 and takes three months at least from the date of application to the date of approval at a public hearing with the zoning administrator. A special use permit would go to the Planning Commission. After that, they would need to obtain a building permit. The cost of the building permit is based on the valuation of the project and is three weeks for the first review and two weeks for subsequent reviews. So the Subcommittee and staff worked to explore some options to reduce permit costs. And we initially developed a more streamlined process. And we presented this process to the public and to the restaurants in September of last year. And we received a lot of feedback. Based on that feedback that we heard during that outreach, we worked hard to create an even more streamlined process. That is what we are presenting now. So this process completely eliminates the planning permit, so there's no use permit or design permit. And that reduces permit fees by over $7,000. It removes at least three months from the entire permitting timeline for these businesses. And under the process, all that is required is a building permit as long as the patio is fully consistent with the proposed design and operational standards. And I'm going to go ahead and hand this over to Rebecca.
Thank you. So under this revised process, we're also taking it a step further in creating sort of administrative streamlining as well by splitting up the building permit options into an hourly review process and a standard review process. So in this case, if a business has an outdoor seating area that's 300 square feet or less and does not have any permanent structures, they could go through an hourly review. And that is, the building fees for that are typically $142 per hour. And we're trying to do a one-week turnaround on that, accounting for about one to two hours of staff review and the rest of that time being the processing to get those permits issued. Under the standard review process, that would be anyone that's wanting to put up a patio cover or have other permanent structures like that, large umbrellas that need to be anchored to the ground, for example, or larger than 300 square foot of space. That goes through our traditional standard building permit review process. Those permits are based on valuation of the project. And those typically have a three-week turnaround for a first round of review. If there's comments and changes required, that goes through additional reviews. But just to give an idea of that initial timeline. So to go through a little bit more on how this process improves and streamlines this review, outdoor seating would now be considered allowed by right, so we don't have those use permit requirements. Businesses would only be required to follow the operating standards and design standards that are set out in the ordinance. They would also be allowed to deviate from those if they wanted to. They would have to go through the use permit or design permit process for that. But we did want to give some flexibility to still allow that if it was needed. Another big change from this is that we're not requiring parking to be replaced as part of outdoor seating. So a lot of these spaces are set up in businesses, private parking lots. And so wanting to be able to allow that space to continue to be used for outdoor seating, there is still a requirement to provide replacement bicycle parking. We do know that, you know, folks will still need to get there. And so we want to provide adequate space for alternative transportation options. Building permit is always required for any private developments. That's not something that we're able to remove in this case, but this is really, as streamlined as we could, whittle this down. And then again, as I stated, being able to provide those two levels of review to try to create some additional easier pathways for businesses. So for a business to consider this, their next steps would be to determine sort of the size that they want to use for their outdoor seating area and then have that path. If they're looking at the 300 square foot or less option, they could do a hand-drawn site plan. We're keeping that threshold really low just to be able to get that approval at a really quick pace. And then over 300 square feet would go through our standard review process of requiring plans developed by a licensed design professional and submitted to building for that review. So just a little bit more background on sort of how we came to this proposed process. We, following the feedback that we received in September of 2023, we did additional surveys of cities that are taking on this effort. There's not too many in the state of California that we found, but we were able to find 14 other cities. Of those 13, still have some sort of discretionary permit requirement. The city that we're really basing our proposal on is the city of San Diego, which is the only other jurisdiction we were able to find in our research that requires a building permit only. And then some of the discussions that we had had early on in this process was, do we want to treat proximity to residential differently, have some different hours of operation? And so cities of San Jose and San Diego do have some different restrictions within certain distances of residential in terms of their hours of operation. And discussions with the Subcommittee and businesses, we decided to not pursue that option, but that is just something that we did explore through this. And then locally, the other jurisdictions in our county still have discretionary permits. Ours is really the most streamlined locally within our other jurisdictions. Okay. And then this did get approved at Planning Commission in June. So this is, their recommendations were to approve the ordinance changes. They also had a recommendation that the City Council consider providing additional time to businesses to move into permanent. So as part of that, we have prepared an extension to our temporary ordinance to expire on July 1st, 2026. This aligns with some alcohol, alcohol license approvals at the state level that were passed during COVID. So just sort of ties up with that move to permanency there. They also requested a definition for the term low volume in the operating standards and specify that temporary restrooms, if used during remodels, have hand washing stations. So we provided that definition. And those are our, the hand washing stations are already required, so that was, that was settled. And then the final recommendation was that the City Council Subcommittee consider reaching out to state representative to advocate for more streamlined regulations around outdoor seating at the state level. And so one of our recommendations for you today is to have the building official help prepare a letter to state representatives that the mayor can send if you wish. And then our staff report recommendations are here. I won't read them for you, but would welcome any questions and comments from here.
Well, thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions or comments by councilmembers. As you're teeing this up, let me thank the Subcommittee of the Council for very good work on this. The Vice Mayor is recognized.
Again, I thank everybody for all your hard work on this. I think the outdoor dining is one of the silver linings that's come out of the pandemic. It's really exciting to see these barriers removed where it's already really expensive to operate a restaurant or dining establishment in this town. And, you know, so this is really, really awesome. The only question I have, and you had a slide up there with the different, the different places. I had one question about one where they have out, it's, I think, Humble Sea, it's on Swift Street. They have outdoor dining in their parking lot, but they also have something that goes out into almost the bike lane. And it's, it seems almost dangerous because the way people are coming around the rail trail right there. And so it's like they already have a huge amount of outdoor dining. And so then that's the only one where it's just like, I see the, the point of taking away the parking spaces. And I don't know if those were previously parking spaces, but to me, it seems like bike lane is being taken. And that, to me, seems dangerous. And maybe I'm perceiving it wrong, but I've seen a lot of near misses there.
Okay, that's great feedback to hear, and we can certainly follow up on that. So that space is actually under our Parklet program, so the outdoor seating on public property, they do have a permit for it, but we can certainly take a look and make sure that there's adequate, you know, signage and, yeah, and distance and all that.
Super activated, which is great. I just don't want anyone to get hurt.
The questions, comments? Councilmembers?
I'll make my comment after.
Certainly. Further questions?
No question. I just have a comment.
If I might ask a couple of quick questions. And colleagues who served on the Subcommittee, thank you for all of your very fine work on that. Let me ask a couple of questions about parking. Will you put the parking slide back up for a second? Wishful thinking, yes. It's okay. Let's do it this way. Let me just ask you about it. Don't worry about it. Do our friends at the Coastal Commission get involved in this? Would you explain how?
They do get involved for the, basically the locations that are in the coastal zone. So, well, it's a little more nuanced than that. So there's a state law that says that if you're within a half mile of a transit district, then you don't have to provide parking in most cases. And most of the city is within a half mile of a transit district. There are some portions that are not within a half mile of a transit district. So, so there is still a required parking for these establishments. A few of that, a few of those establishments are in the coastal zone, and that is the establishments at the southern end of Seabright.
Could you speak a little more?
I'm sorry. The, the businesses at the southern end of Seabright, by Seabright and Murray, there's a handful of businesses that have outdoor dining spaces. Those are outside a half mile of a transit district. I'm sorry, half mile of a, of a major, a major bus stop, I'm sorry. And so they still have a parking requirement. They are also in the coastal zone. So these regulations in the proposed ordinance, once approved by the city, would then go to the Coastal Commission for approval. And the Coastal Commission would, would need to approve that we are no longer requiring those parking spaces to be replaced if they are removed in order to create an outdoor dining patio.
Are there any limits on the number of applications we could receive? Are there any limits on the number of applications we could receive and process?
We don't have a limit on that.
Say it again.
We do not have a limit on that.
We do not have a limit. So as applicants come in, we'll be processing those. We'll do it in the context of our ordinance, right?
Correct.
Okay. And we do not have policy with, is a question, not a statement. We do not have policy with regard to the removal of parking?
So in the proposed ordinance, for required parking spaces that are removed, they need to be replaced with additional bicycle parking, and that will be at a ratio of six bicycle parking spaces per automobile parking space removed. And that's consistent with our parking ordinance for locations that want to remove required parking. They can do, anyone can do that up to a certain percentage. Or they, or the establishment could participate in the city's non-automobile program, which includes things like provision of bus passes to employees and other incentives for alternative transportation.
What is the lens through which the Coastal Commission will review this ordinance? What is the Coastal Commission jurisdiction through which they will evaluate our ordinance?
Well, mostly, well, they look through it through the view of the Coastal Act.
I understand, but can we get more specific than that?
So specifically, I think their concern would be coastal access and specifically the provision of public parking to access the coast. So that's how they would be looking at that, whether removal of these parking spaces on private property could affect that.
I'm interested in the parking that's in the public right-of-way. That's the parking I'm interested in, because it seems to me over the years, the Coastal Commission's, shall we say, reluctant to approve anything that reduces access to the coast, and public parking in our city is one of those issues. I like this program a lot. I'm trying to anticipate what it is we're going to be dealing with at the Coastal Commission and what legal standard they're going to apply in reviewing our ordinance. So do we have a sense, have we communicated with the Coastal Commission and gotten a sense from their staff how they're going to review this? And again, I'd like to see if I can understand the lens through which they will be evaluating this.
We have spoken with Coastal Commission staff, and they looked at the number of spaces that could potentially be removed and how that could impact the public parking in that neighborhood. And based on that conversation we had, they expressed that they felt comfortable with what we were proposing.
And on a going-forward basis, am I right in presuming, we're saying to them, here's what we know right now. Here's the list of businesses, for example, here's a list of businesses, here we go. What we don't know is in the future, what may come in by way of applications. So are they, Coastal Commission, when you inquired, are they looking at, here's the businesses that are already, in essence, in the program? And these amount of parking spaces will, for automobiles, will be removed. There's some parking for bicycles and this and that, but here's how we're going to do it. So their response is, well, that looks okay to us. Going forward, where you answered my question earlier, we have no limits on this. We are not going to limit this. So presumably, businesses can come in over time, years over time, make applications, here's our ordinance, if you comply, you get it. Am I right?
To an extent, yes. However, the way that that area is zoned, it's a small commercial node at the intersection of Seabright and Murray, and it's surrounded by residential. And that's, those residences are not going to become businesses because it's zoned residential. So basically, the businesses that we have there are the businesses that we have. And maybe there will be very slight changes in the businesses over time. You know, it's possible that, like, a convenience store might become a restaurant, but the number of businesses that could potentially start as new restaurants and create new patios beyond what is already there is very small.
It occurs to me that, that on the, what I'll call the west side, and especially way out on the west side, where seeing a lot of breweries, businesses, restaurants, and so on, seems to me that the west side is going to continue, or it's likely anyway, that it continues in that vein. There are plenty of development opportunities over on the west side and so on. Are we and/or the Coastal Commission at all in a discussion about that? Because that would seem, those are in the coastal zone, if I understand it correctly.
There is a portion of the west side industrial area in the coastal zone. The vast majority of that is within a half mile of a major transit stop.
So they would be?
So they would be exempt from this. They don't, basically, they don't have a parking requirement, so there is no, there is no, they have parking spaces, but they would not be, there would be no requirement to replace them with anything.
And the Coastal Commission is comfortable with that? That works for them?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. This be the opportunity for the public to comment on this item? And Mr. Ewing, up to three minutes.
Didn't even have to ask.
Of course not, we're here to serve.
That's wonderful. So probably most of your ears are burning on the other side of this maritime courtroom wall, but at least one other person in this room might be. First of all, I'm really glad that I have more free time, because when I initially saw the information that was posted, it was kind of exactly like what I thought someone was talking about a couple months ago, and I said, I would love to help you with this. Years before I ever stood before you guys, I was dealing with the county of Santa Cruz and the city of Santa Cruz, dealing with code compliance and red tags. And I am not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I can read slow, but I can read. But when you have binders about the codes, and you point out that they're potentially leading themselves to some pretty serious lawsuits if people get together, once again, I'm really glad that this seems much easier, and I would certainly like to help anybody with that stuff. On a side note, I lost a lot of potential clients because I gave them so much information that they had the confidence to do it themselves. So where am I going with this? You know, how many businesses that I was more of a witness to because the county of Santa Cruz didn't shut down for the public for two years? I've been destroyed. I'm sure there's some similarities between all the businesses that stayed open in Carmel and in Santa Cruz, because they're just drug-money laundering organizations. But the businesses that have struggled to stay open, next time some crap starts, I mentioned that the monkey pox was patented in 1997, full of interesting, fun facts like that, how many people are gonna practice their skills as a lesser magistrate and question authority? So I'm really glad that I have more free time, because I would have loved to done some professional stuff, where I'm actually pretty good at, but now I get to do other stuff. But I certainly want to help the businesses that are still open stay open, and I'm glad that there are all these options. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Good afternoon, welcome.
Greetings, council, once again. You know, I have my misgivings about the outdoor seating, because it tends to obstruct the flow of pedestrian foot traffic, especially in the downtown. And, you know, so you can say, I mean, that's one good thing that came out of COVID. Well, in some ways, not a lot of good things came out of COVID. Oh, wow. Now I'm much easier to hear, I'm sure. So, yeah, the cinder block construction that you put in front of several restaurants seems down Pacific, in a way, the edges, the corners on those are quite sharp. You don't think people are gonna hurt themselves on those? Like, if I were the city, I'd be interested in grinding them back so they're not, and, you know, they're just a hard surface, you know, there's just a lot of rough-and-tumble stuff that goes on down on the Mall quite often. But what I noticed is, you know, prior to COVID, there were a lot of businesses that had outdoor seating, and, you know, it's just not really that big of a deal, so I'm not too sure why, you know, it isn't, you know, just the same process for a new business to get approved for outdoor seating, and it should be, you know, kind of held to the same level of restraint and diligence as those. I mean, I can, I listed off a bunch, there's Jack's, Taco Bell, Togo's, Tocrya Santa Cruz Subway, Charlie Hong Kong's, I think, sort of. Then there are businesses, and chocolate, there are businesses like Burger and Derwiners Schnitzel that are no longer around, but that had that. But, yeah, basically, I don't think every restaurant should have outdoor seating. I mean, I think there's reasons why you permit it and you, you know, have it be a case-by-case, because, you know, restaurateurs, you know, know this quite well, is, you know, the way a restaurant succeeds is its location. But, you know, in some ways, like what I was complaining about with the fenced-in area in front of New Leaf and the two kiosks there at Lincoln and Pacific, that's really kind of a bubble that public spaces then crowded out, you know, it's narrow, it's attenuated around it, and I'm glad that those wrought iron, I mean, they were nice fences, I'm sure they could be used for something else, but I'm glad they got taken out. Anyway, I don't have much else to say that's not gonna sound like rambling, so I hope some of what I said made sense. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next person online. Good afternoon.
Hi again, everyone. I'm Karen Madura, owner of Brady's, the jury room, and acting manager at The Russian. I wanted to say thank you to everyone for all of the hard work that we've been doing. As we all know, this is a lifeline to us to have this be considered. That being said, we, I am still concerned about the costs and the viability as this plan stands, and I do see a lot of work from the city in reducing that, and I'm very grateful. And, you know, again, asking for more help or asking why economic development doesn't, you know, actually want to help us, even though they're offering loans, they're not offering help, was a question I had. I was also reading through this report, and one of the recommendations from the Planning Commission was to have the city council ad hoc reach out to our state representatives to see if there was any movement or any, anything like that, and I didn't see a response in the report, so I was hoping for some follow-up on that. And, yeah, another ask would be to extend it to 2028 or 2030, to give time to look at what the state maybe could help us with, and if that's not an avenue that we're able to go down, to give us a chance to raise funds to make this happen. Again, we're committed to having this be wonderful for the city in terms of tax dollars and great for all of our constituents and make it work in the neighborhood. So just want to keep moving this process forward and in a positive direction for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrice Boil. I'm the owner of La Posta Restaurant, former owner of Swaff wine bar downtown. I have been in business on Murray and Seabright location since 2006. We stayed open during the pandemic the whole time. Everybody in my kitchen remained on payroll. Part of that was because we had the opportunity to do something that was somewhat outside the box. So I appreciate the effort by the, everybody involved here, but would like to urge the city to do more. I'm sure, or maybe you have, I'm sure you've heard of the commercial, outdoor commercial patio ordinance in the city of Fremont. I can share this with you, I downloaded it, but I can leave this. They allow, in 2022, they reformatted how they work, and they allow 750 square feet permitted through a zoning administrator, and it costs $500. They don't require, and I was happy to see in this new iteration that we can, if we only do 300 square feet, we can hand draw something instead of what was previous, required in the previous, was signed architectural drawings. I want everyone to understand how much support outdoor dining has from citizens of this city. I mean, it's really, really, very, very supportive, and this ordinance, if passed, will probably reduce the amount of outdoor dining space on private property by about 75%, okay? So I am just trying to make that percentage be a little bit smaller. I would like, I support the city, the planning department's efforts to, or suggestion that this be extended to 2026. The state extended this, the program, very specifically to support restaurants and outdoor dining to, I believe it is July, July of 2026. And that would, I think, not only allow us to reach out as the planning department or Planning Commission has recommended to state people to try to fix this or to change it, but I do think that Santa Cruz has the opportunity to really change the picture here for the whole state. So I would like to see that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for operating your very fine restaurant. Anyone else wish to testify? We have someone online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Yes, this is Garrett. I knew Mike again. I didn't really prepare anything. I mean, this is sort of the same old stuff. You know, I'm kind of, you know, basically okay with private property doing whatever they want, although, as you know, less parking spaces do impact the rest of the neighborhood a little bit, maybe. You know, it's a little anticompetitive also, since not every business has parking spaces to use up with outdoor dining, so you're kind of just interfering with the free market there. But mostly, it's this public right-of-way external outdoor seating that's got some issues. I don't know how, you know, the public really weighs in on specific locations. You know, every location's a little different as to what effect it might have. It's sort of a blanket extension, don't really understand why it's so long. And I do, and this is something that's really kind of critical to understand, I mean, there's this assumption that it's this net economic benefit, and yet I wonder, and I've said this before, you know, really, does just adding more tables all over town, does that really increase the net amount of diners that eat out? Or are they all just stealing, you know, market share from each other? Whoever can expand the most gets the most customers, you know, because people don't want to wait to eat or anything, so if there's more tables somewhere else, they maybe go over there, you know? And I don't think you have an answer for that. I don't think you have any data on that. And perhaps in that case, if there really is no net increase in customers, perhaps the only net beneficiary is the government collecting all these fees for everything, and then there's all this expense of creating these outer spaces, which is, you know, it's an expense for businesses, and it's, it's an expansion war. It's like, I gotta have outdoor spaces to compete with the next guy, you know? And if there aren't more customers, I mean, I don't know if that ends well for the businesses as much as you think it does. And then the parking, yeah, less public parking, people use cars, cars are legal, visitors use cars, you know, I mean, there's something you can get away with, but is that the right thing to do, you know? And then there's this exclusive use of the public right-of-way, they're really just sort of auctioning off for the benefit of various businesses, and the public, that's a debt loss to the public, you know, can't ignore that, you know? And, let's see, surely, I think the businesses have recovered, and haven't they gotten their use of the temporary seating that they have? You know, and it's just interfering with the free market, to the city's financial benefit, using the public right-of-way. benefit, using the public right-of-way as a freebie, and it benefits a few special interests. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Bush, anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon, welcome. Three, two, one. Anyone else online?
Hello?
Well, hello. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, my name is Max Trigliotto. I'm the owner of Mission West Bar, formerly the Old Watering Hole, purchased about six months before COVID hit. I am also on the subcommittee, have been to the eight-plus meetings over, I think, a year or two, and, you know, to reiterate, we've, we've gotten down to about $7,000 in savings in maybe two or three months of administrative, you know, permitting, which I'm appreciative, but contrary to the last person's understanding, the tax revenue that these businesses are collecting alone pays for that $7,000, probably within a quarter or two of business, and that is actual data collected. You can talk to Ian down at Hula's and ask him how much business they've lost with reducing their square footage. Huge amount of business, and same at Lupolo, which also includes employees that he had to fire and let go. So, we spent a lot of time on this, we kind of are where we are. I think economic development did what they can, and it seems like we're, we're ending it, state building code issues, and all of us are really feeling that that's the biggest issue here, is that we're getting thrown to state building, or I'm sorry, to city building without having any knowledge of what is going to be thrown at us. You know, each spot is different, which I understand. I know for mine alone, to add the bathroom, that'll be required to add $30,000 minimum, and that's, that's on the low end. I know other people, just to add a bathroom could be 50 to 100, and there's a lot more issues that could come up. We could be looking at fire sprinklers, we could be looking at all types of issues, and it's so unknown. And so, if that really is the way that unfortunately we're going to go, I have to agree with Patrice, we're going to lose a lot of these businesses in outdoor seating, possibly more than just their outdoor seating. It could be a lot more than that. And so, I would also like to back Karen up in saying, I think we ought to go farther than 2026, because as most people know in this town, building department does not move fast, and it could be, it could be a year or two before we actually find out what needs to be done to expand. And not only the time that it takes to get there, but we need to understand the expenses, and we need to save up for those expenses. So, if this really is the end of the road, and this is all we're going to get, is kind of thrown to building department, I would ask for more than, than 2026 of June, which I think is where we're at right now. I'm already getting wedding reservations for end of 2025. I assume 2026 is not far behind that, and thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Matters back before the body, profligate the body. Ms. Kaltar Johnson is recognized.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation, and I can read that. There we go. And then I've added a third part to it. So, acknowledge the environmental determination introduced for publication and ordinance amending chapter 24.10, sections 24.12, 190, 24.12, 290, and 24.12, 1108, and adding sections 24.10, 2342, and 24.12, 191 to streamline permitting for private property outdoor seating areas for eating and drinking establishments. Part two, acknowledge the environmental determination introduced for publication and ordinance amending uncodified ordinance number 2020-27, extending temporary use of certain adjacent public streets and outdoor areas for eligible businesses that extends the temporary period for commercial use on private property from May 31, 2025 to July 1, 2026. And then part three, direct mayor to send a letter to state representatives to advocate for all cities to adopt state building code interpretation that does not trigger any new required bathroom fixtures for businesses within, with 300 square feet or less of outdoor dining or drinking area.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, and you may open on your motion.
Great. I just, I first want to acknowledge the businesses who are here and who aren't here, who have been with us, I think, more than a year, actually. This process really started in 2022. You have put a lot of time and thought into this, and, and your voices have helped us get to where we are, and it's helped us think out of the box and push and stretch. We also had residents who participated, who also brought some very legitimate concerns to us, so that helped shape it. Our planning commissioners who saw this item two times and really put a lot of thought into it, and then, of course, the dynamic staff that we have, and all the work that you've put into, to bringing us really what I think a framework that is better than many other frameworks, as we heard through your presentation. No other jurisdiction in our county is doing something like this. Only one out of the 14 cities we've surveyed, San Diego, is following the same type of a framework. So, I think we've, we've pushed and stretched ourselves, and I hear the concerns of those who spoke, Karen and Max and Patrice. I don't run a business like yours, but I do know running a small business is a challenging task that you have. So, I think, I think we've landed in the right place, and we're going in the right direction. I've added the third component, because as was pointed out, both through the presentation and through the speakers, we are constrained by state code and state law. Some of it is legitimate health and safety reasons, and some of it, it's, it's state law, and we're not, we don't know why we can't stretch, have the state law stretch. So, that's why the added direction of, of having other cities interpret that fixture component of the 300 square feet, I'm not articulating it very well, because I'm not a planner, but you explained it really well on the agenda, and I think, you know, we've done some research, and we've done some digging, and I think this is the extent that we can push our state advocates to move in the direction that we feel is a better fit for our businesses. So, I think with that, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Further debate or discussion, Councilmember Brunner.
Thank you. I, I wonder if the motion maker, I just wanted to add some language on your item three with the state letter, and I think there's a component of state advocacy in, in this as well, and however you want that language to be worded, rather than specific to interpreting the code the same, the code that triggers, the state building code that triggers a required restroom, or certain infrastructure over 300 square feet, that there's also a request for support from the state. So, I'm wondering if-
Do you want to propose the language, how you want it said?
Um, I don't have anything in mind, and I, I can try and talk it, and just add, if you can pull it up, the motion and her item three. Okay, direct mayor to send a letter to state representatives to advocate for all cities to adopt state building code interpretation that does not trigger any new required bathroom fixtures for businesses with 600 square feet or less of outdoor dining or drinking area.
What piece do you see is missing that you'd like added?
Uh, state, more flexibility and support and financial as well. And I know this came up in several of our meetings. So, I don't know if it needs to go in here, if we can have this discussion as the letter is written. I know that there is a draft that can be, maybe it can simply, I'm giving direction to include that point in the draft letter. That might be the simplest way to do that. It's not just about the bathroom code and advocating that all cities have the same interpretation of the code. As we see, there was, you know, different cities that were researched, and there are different codes, so.
Let me see if this might work for you. How about we do this? I think I, I am clear on, I think I am clear on the sentiment you are expressing. How about I do this? I think that the direction for the mayor to communicate with our state legislators is broad enough. How about, I will show you the draft. I think that it fits with the, within the ambit of the current motion, and I'd be glad to consult with you before I send that letter.
Thank you.
You're certainly welcome.
I appreciate that.
Further debate or discussion. We'll go to Mr. Newsom and Ms. Brown, and move our way around here. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly just thank my colleagues, Councilmember Calentari Johnson and Councilmember Brunner, for their work on the subcommittee. I also want to thank staff for their work on this, and thank those who spoke today on this gen item. You know, just want to associate myself with the comments of Councilmember Calentari Johnson. We, the program was set up to try to streamline the program as much as possible without running afoul of state law and providing an extension that's provided by state law of two years from now, and just want to thank everybody for their work, and, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also share my appreciation with the subcommittee and economic development staff. I know you have really worked hard to find the, you know, all of the areas where the challenges facing our local businesses, you know, can, can be effectively addressed. And it is incredibly complex, and so I just appreciate your time sticking with it. It seems like, and what we're, what we've been presented with is, is significantly different and, and much more streamlined and hopefully effective, productive for business owners than where we started. And I remember having meetings with business owners about, both for the parklet program, the public space, but also on the, the private side. A lot of particular challenges related to the space they inhabit and the conditions, the leasing or ownership and all of those other things, but the common themes really were about, particularly for the private, private outdoor dining, parking and restrooms. And so, I see this as a really great step forward. I also want to recognize that, that there will be businesses, and we're hearing from some of them, who are going to be affected by this, and, and I don't want to see them slip through the cracks and just disappear. And so, I'm wondering, I have, I guess, a couple of follow-up questions. One, related to the extension, the timeline. I know we had extended until 2025. At the time, I said, can we have a longer extension, because I know you all are going to come back, and this is going to happen, and here we are. That doesn't provide, you know, some certainty for business, right? I mean, they're going to keep hoping that if we can't figure it out, that there's, they may be able to find a way forward. Is the, the time extension, is that something that you think can be adjusted? Could we have a longer time period for people to work it out? Could we have some kind of maybe report back to, you know, so that this, we don't all just go away and then leave businesses to try to figure this out? Some way to kind of inventory, you know, progress on this, and what still is outstanding? Is that possible, and why?
Councilmember Brown, I'm going to, let me stay with the-
So, it's, they're all kind of together. Can we do a longer extension? Why you guys picked this time period?
Let me start with staff on a response. You have a response on this?
I mean, I think that the 2020, you know, we, we need to have an end date to this. These were set up under emergency parameters, and so, I think being consistent with the state law is sort of that date that we looked at. Those temporary alcohol, you know, permits are set to expire at that date, and so, you know, that could be a technical issue that comes up if we extended this longer, and businesses don't have that permanent expansion. So, I think, you know, we're, we're sort of comfortable with this, and being able to provide, you know, essentially two years from this point. We're a little bit past that deadline to move this forward. And I think also with this proposal, having, you know, the hourly review for the 300 square foot, these rules are going to be in place going forward. This isn't a one or done thing for the businesses, so if it's a matter of needing to scale down, I mean, we absolutely want to see our businesses be able to keep as much outdoor dining space as they can, but if they need to scale down to, you know, meet this deadline and be able to move forward with permanent, they're able to apply for a building permit to change that, to expand as they go further and have, you know, the capital and the means to do that, is sort of how we've been looking at this.
Okay. I think that the questions around restrooms are really related to state building code, and so I'm not even going to go there. I, I really appreciate you all working through that. So, yeah, I guess I'll, you know, I want to support this. I mean, absolutely thrilled to see the progress that's been made, but I'm, I'm going to say I am worried about how some businesses are going to be able to move forward. I mean, if you don't have any capital to make that investment upfront, if you need an extra restroom, for example, because you do want to maintain larger outdoor dining, which benefits the city, as we know, you know, I just feel like there's some unresolved stuff there, and so I would like to see some space available for businesses to continue to work. I don't know if your subcommittee is done with your work entirely. No, I don't want to ask you to keep going, but is there just some space, some mechanism by which people can, like, not fall through the cracks?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, my role in economic development is support these businesses through these processes. You know, Karen did mention, we have loan program, we have, you know, those are below interest, you know, below market rate microloans that would be, you know, applicable to this cause, and certainly can help, you know, businesses navigate that process if it's something that fits and is what they want to pursue. And I think certainly, you know, being able to assist them evaluating what the approach is and working through with the building department and planning to facilitate that process. I mean, ED is not done with this role. This is, you know, we're continuing through as, you know, we have the process in place and can now really get into the details with businesses individually. So, definitely continuing to be supportive and be that resource that we can help them move forward.
Thanks.
Councilmember Watkins is recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. I, I feel comfortable with, with your response, and I know that you are very committed to supporting our businesses. I too just want to thank my council colleagues and all the folks that were coming together to come up with this comprehensive policy. I know it's not perfect, not, most policies aren't, but you do your best to balance it all, and I think we're ahead of the game based on the other jurisdictions that are compared, and it's really good for our community. And I think outdoor dining has been a great asset and expansion, and our ability to be able to support the businesses and moving forward in a streamlined process is a, is a good step forward. I do appreciate the added direction. I think it'd be helpful at the state to have some guidance there for other jurisdictions. I know other jurisdictions do grapple with this. I was talking to some other cities in Monterey County that are struggling with this as well, and so having some, some broader state guidance will be really helpful, so I appreciate that added direction. Those conclude my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmembers, if I might ask a question, then, of, I don't think I do want to ask a question, because that was previously, Matters back before the body. I will say this, unless there is some objection, we've heard that an extension of this July 1, 2026 deadline, I am going to assume, unless I am told otherwise, that that is a date we choose. Is there a reason we would not choose, for example, January 1, 2027? Is there a reason we would not do that? Is there a legal reason? I'm not asking staff, because this Matters back before the body. I'm asking essentially those who've labored on this issue for quite a while. Is there a reason we would not do that?
We wanted to be in alignment with the state law, and my understanding is that there could be some technical challenges if the state law is now saying one thing, and then our ordinance is saying another, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
And, and I'll add that we've had a, quite a long runway.
Yes.
Longer than some, most other jurisdictions.
Right.
And we know that our staff is available to help those.
And we know that our staff is available to help those businesses.
So those of you who are on this body, the ad hoc group that testified, you're comfortable with that date? There's no need, in your estimation, to extend that date to six months beyond that or something of that nature? You're comfortable with this date?
I mean, I think we, you know, I think there will be, my understanding is there could be some challenges between what the state law then says and what we say, and if it weren't for that, we could just keep extending it. And at some point, we want to have something that's in the books that we're all consistent about, that new businesses and existing businesses under the emergency extension are kind of moving aligned together.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. For the debate or discussion, seeing and hearing none, the clerk will call the rule.
Councilmembers Newsom?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Golda?
Aye.
Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion has been ordered. We have now, I believe Ms. Bush completed our business, Mr. Kundati completed our business.
We have.
Motion to adjourn would be in order. The vice mayor with deep reluctance moves adjournment, and Councilmember Brown with equal reluctance makes a second non-debatable. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries into order. We stand adjourned.
Okay.
Very good.
Very good.
Good work.
Good work.